When a judge hears a case, drug companies tend to prevail. When a jury hears a case, those suing prevail. In this instance, a city and a county in West Virginia sued drug distributors McKesson, AmerisourceBergen, and Cardinal Health, claiming they created a public nuisance by flooding communities with addictive painkillers. Public nuisance arguments are the prevailing legal strategy in these cases. The federal judge in the West Virginia case was unconvinced, ruling the drug distributors were not responsible for the addiction crisis because they were fulfilling legally written prescriptions. The three drug distributors have agreed to a $26 billion nationwide settlement to resolve thousands of similar lawsuits. But the two governments in West Virginia opted out of that settlement and took their case to court, seeking more compensation. They were asking for $2.5 billion to help fight opioid addiction in their communities. I'm Novosavu for Marketplace.
Let's do the numbers. Nasdaq futures are down 1.2% now. Nasdaq futures down 1.3%. Dow futures are down 338 points, 1.1%. A euro is below a dollar three this morning, lowest in 20 years. Any day now, I could be saying the euro equals a dollar. That's called parity. U.S. interest rates are going up faster than Europe's, which does this. U.S. companies with profits in Europe don't like this, since the profits shrink when brought back to dollars. U.S. travelers do like this, because things in the eurozone seem very cheap.
Marketplace Morning Report is supported by Prisma Sassi from Palo Alto Networks. Secure access for hybrid workforces wherever work happens. The future of secure access is ZTNA 2.0. It's zero trust with zero exceptions. More at paloeltonetworks.com. And by PWC, whose community of solvers comes together in unexpected ways to build trust and deliver sustained outcomes. More at thenewequation.com.
With Russia putting the extra squeeze on Europe's natural gas supplies, it's now Germany, Austria, and the Netherlands firing back up power plants that use coal, fuel that puts out not quite twice the climate-changing carbon dioxide compared to gas. Recently back from Germany is Vijay Vaitaswaran, the Global Energy and Climate Innovation Editor at The Economist Magazine. Vijay, welcome.
Hello there.
All right. You want to keep the heat and the lights on in Europe, but what does this do to Europe's climate targets? I mean, they'd agreed to these targets.
You're right. Climate ambition in Europe was perhaps the highest in the world, coming out of the U.N. Summit, the so-called COP26 Summit in Scotland end of last year. But what we're really seeing is that energy security is threatening to push climate sideways, maybe even backwards, for five or 10 years, unless Europe finds a way to thread the needle. And that's a lesson that California, Australia, other places in the world that are trying to balance climate and energy security can learn from.
Well, you were on the ground in Germany recently, I understand. What's the thinking there regarding coal?
Coal is getting a short-term reprieve, in that they're actually encouraging coal plants to run at a higher capacity utilization rate in the short term, which is terrible for the climate, because they don't want to have blackouts. And so they're trying to find all manner of alternatives. Increasing coal production a bit is one of them. They're politically constrained from putting their nuclear power, because they've decided to shut them down. So that really leaves them with trying to get as many renewables on the grid as quickly as possible, and that one questionable choice, from the point of view of the Greens, natural gas, as the bridge.
Now, you've been reporting on the great energy transition, not just in Europe, but globally. Engineers would love to find a way to grab the CO2 before it gets out there in the atmosphere and squirrel this carbon dioxide away. But, you know, getting into the second half of 2022 here, Vijay, do we know how to do this in a useful, efficient way?
We've known how to do this for decades. One way to do it is really to allow fossil fuels to be burned and then to store it afterwards. It's expensive, it's fiddly, it's not going to happen unless there's subsidies of some kind. Another alternative is really to think about, how do we take something like natural gas and turn it into hydrogen, a fuel of the future, an energy carrier that doesn't contribute to climate change? And when you take off that carbon dioxide, store that in the ground, for example, sequester it. And that approach of turning natural gas into hydrogen that can be burned cleanly and used in other ways, that's sort of the future that a number of parts of the world are looking at, on how you use natural gas today, but future-proof it by getting your equipment hydrogen-ready.
Right. But that's not something that's going to get us through the next couple of years, given Russia and Ukraine.
Definitely not. But if you don't make plans for that now, all of the new fossil plants that are built are going to get locked in. That's exactly what countries like Germany are coming up with, policies that would compensate investors more for future-proofing their assets. And if they don't do that, they will not be given permits to build them.
Meanwhile, back with coal. Coal producers working hard to keep up with this new demand, and what had seemed like yesterday's fuel source is back, at least for now.
This is a golden year for coal, right? After 20 years in which people have seen it as environmental enemy number one, and so it really is something that we should try to move off of, and many countries have. But right now, we're using more coal than last year, and we're going to continue to do that because of the geopolitical problems of Russia, as well as the slower ramp-up of renewables that people are seeing in different parts of the world.
Vijay Vaitaswaran is the Global Energy and Climate Innovation Editor at The Economist Magazine. His reporting on climate technologies and how they're shaping the energy transition was in the magazine's Technology Quarterly recently. Vijay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And there's news.
Good morning. I think we just wrapped.
The Scandinavian airline SAS has just filed for bankruptcy protection here in New York,
Call the meeting to order. Can you hear me? You guys, okay, maybe they didn't hear.
just a day after pilots went on strike.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to our July 5th informal session of Roanoke City
It'll keep operating, but it's been losing money and wants to reorganize.
Council.
Also, the chief operating officer at a low-cost airline in Europe is out.
And I will ask our clerk, Ms. Susan McCourt, to call the roll.
EasyJet had had terrible cancellations in June.
Mr. Cobb.
She's here.
Our producers are Jared Deng, Meredith Garretson, Ariana Rosas, Sarah Hawkins.
He's waving.
Okay. Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Here.
Ms. Price.
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Here.
Mr. Bestbitch.
Here.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Here.
And Mayor Lee is absent.
Mayor Lee is absent, and a quorum is present. So we got a little bit different configuration going up here, but we are going to get it done. And Mr. Cobb, welcome. Thank you for joining us virtually.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, everybody.
Council meeting will be televised live and replayed on RV TV Channel 3 on Thursdays at 7:00 p.m. and Saturdays from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and video streamed through Facebook Live at facebook.com/roanokeva. Council meetings are also offered with closed captioning for the deaf or hard of hearing. Items for action, a communication from myself, Vice Mayor Patricia Whiteboy, requesting that council convene in a closed meeting to discuss vacancies on certain authorities, boards, commissions, and committees appointed by council pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1, Code of Virginia 1950 as amended. A list of the current vacancies is included with the agenda for this morning's meeting. I need a motion?
So move. Second.
The motion passes. Do you need a... Items listed on the 2:00 p.m. council docket requiring discussion, clarification, and additional deletions to the 2:00 p.m. agenda. Does anyone see any clarifications or any corrections to the 2:00 p.m. agenda? Mr. Bestbitch?
I do have an addition, but I think we need to vote on the motion first.
Yes.
Yes.
I'll call the roll.
Call the roll.
Mr. Cobb.
I don't know if Joe can...
Yeah.
Okay. Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Bestbitch.
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye. And the motion passes. And you said you had an addition, Mr. Bestbitch?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Dr. Ramona Kirsh, who is the Director of International Programs at Hollins University, recently returned from a trip to South Korea, including an opportunity to visit our sister city in Wanjou. And she has brought back some items to be presented to the city, and you can receive on behalf of the mayor. So I would like to add that to the item two on the agenda this afternoon under Presentations.
Okay. Thank you.
And then, Madam Chair, we could have a formal vote authorizing Councilmember Cobb to participate remotely.
Do we need a motion for that?
If we could just have a motion and go on the record.
So move.
That's the... Second.
And I'll call the roll.
Call the roll.
Yes. Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Bestbitch.
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye. And the motion passes. And you said you had an addition, Mr. Bestbitch?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Dr. Ramona Kirsh, who is the Director of International Programs at Hollins University, recently returned from a trip to South Korea, including an opportunity to visit our sister city in Wanjou. And she has brought back some items to be presented to the city, and you can receive on behalf of the mayor. So I would like to add that to the item two on the agenda this afternoon under Presentations.
Okay. Thank you.
And then, Madam Chair, we could have a formal vote authorizing Councilmember Cobb to participate remotely.
Do we need a motion for that?
If we could just have a motion and go on the record. That's the...
So move.
Second.
And I'll call the roll.
Call the roll.
Yes. Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Bestbitch.
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye. And the motion passes. And you said you had an addition, Mr. Bestbitch?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Dr. Ramona Kirsh, who is the Director of International Programs at Hollins University, recently returned from a trip to South Korea, including an opportunity to visit our sister city in Wanjou. And she has brought back some items to be presented to the city, and you can receive on behalf of the mayor. So I would like to add that to the item two on the agenda this afternoon under Presentations.
Okay. Thank you.
And then, Madam Chair, we could have a formal vote authorizing Councilmember Cobb to participate remotely.
Do we need a motion for that?
If we could just have a motion and go on the record. That's the...
So move.
Second.
And I'll call the roll.
Call the roll.
Yes. Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Bestbitch.
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye. So did we get all of the formalities out of the way?
Yes. All the formalities are out of the way.
The accentis and the virtualities. Okay. Well, then, I will...
That we followed our policies.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Spencer. Then I will call on our city manager to introduce our briefing.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We have two briefings this morning, and actually, the first is going to be provided by the city attorney dealing with the code amendment, and the second will be the annual public safety update provided by the police chief. So at this point, we'll turn it over to Mr. Spencer.
We're going to do the legislative committee first.
Oh, that's right.
It would be best, I think, if we held that, Madam Chair, first.
Okay. Do we do... Okay. I'm just following the agenda.
Yeah, recess.
Yes. And I apologize, Madam Vice Mayor, for dropping the ball a little bit on making sure that that got onto the agenda. But I would like to go ahead and, since we have some folks here joining us for that purpose, to go ahead and have the legislative committee meeting first.
Okay. Well, then, we will recess our council meeting and then go into the legislative agenda.
Thank you.
Oh, I know. It's all a lot.
It's a lot.
Sorry. Sorry about that. And I will call the committee meeting to order and ask our secretary to please call the roll of the committee.
Mayor Lee. Mr. Bestbitch.
Here.
Ms. Whiteboy.
Here.
Mr. Cobb.
Here.
Ms. Price.
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Here.
Dr. Seibert.
Here.
Dr. Jamison.
Here.
You are good to go.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And let me just start off by congratulating Dr. Seibert on his recent appointment. And you have to help me. I forget exactly which one of the education...
State Board of Education.
State Board of Education. Okay. So congratulations, and I think that bodes well for our region to have you as part of that board. So appreciate it. The main purpose for today's meeting is to get an introduction from our partners at Adventist. We have Ron Jordan and Laura Bateman with us virtually this morning. And I see Ron has taken off his... Here he is. There he is. Okay. So really, we just want to start off with getting an overview of what you see forthcoming. We've had a lot of information from you, which we greatly appreciate, as to what's happened in the 2022 session, and of course, the much-delayed final passage of a budget. And you gave us a lot of details on how that affects the city of Roanoke and our region. So if you want to review some of that briefly, but mostly talk about where you see things headed from here, and what we should be paying particular attention to. So Ron, I'll just kick it over to you, if I could.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I'd like to, I think, all of y'all know Laura Bateman, who does most of the real work on your behalf. You know, I look nice sometimes on the screen, but Laura does all the work, and give her the credit for that. I'd like to introduce a new member of our team who joined us in January, Kathy Bercher. Kathy came to us from the Northern Administration, where she was the Deputy Secretary of Education. Prior to that, she spent probably close to a decade with, working for the state's largest public education advocacy organization. Kathy's expertise is in, obviously, in public ed, but also in local government, and we are pleased to add her to our Roanoke team here. She's going to be supporting Laura and myself, and probably be, you'll see more and more of her over the next year. She takes up a larger role in helping you guys. So with that, I'd like to just jump right in, and as I say in the past, as prologue can often be prologue to the future, with that, I'd like to let Laura run through real quickly, review what happened during the session in terms of your 2022 legislative package and what we're able to accomplish, and then you'll see that flow naturally in our 2023 discussion.
Thank you. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you, Ron, and good morning to everyone. Yeah, so we thought it would be instructive to sort of go through your legislative program for the '22 General Assembly. I know you got, you received numerous updates from us throughout this session that frankly, really, just ended a few weeks ago with the budget. But we'll go through your program really quick to see, you know, what things took and what things may be out there for 2023. So in no particular order, or maybe it is from your program, but we were unable to find a patron for the bill dealing with the lead status and priority for unpaid solid waste collection fees. That may be something you want to look at for the 2023 session. Authorizing localities require retrofitting of buildings containing one or more dwelling units to install and maintain smoke alarms. That bill, I think it needs special sort of intervention or discussion, because it failed on one vote difference. But the committee, in the bipartisan method, or bipartisan way, both wanted, all wanted the committee chairman to send a letter to the Department of Housing and Community Development to address that issue in a regulatory manner. So that letter has been sent, and we're keeping up on it. So hopefully, you won't need to come back to the 2023 session with legislation, that they will indeed take care of it in a regulatory manner. So we'll keep an eye on that for you. Senator Edwards' bill, and that was the Senator Edwards' bill, by the way, as well. Senator Edwards' bill to limit smoking in designated areas and outdoor parks failed in committee, or they actually, they carried it over, but it, it's a thing in the General Assembly, that's what's seen as anti-smoking bills still, it's mind-boggling, but there we are. The Roanoke Charter Bill, again, well, not again. Politics, basically, was responsible for that bill not passing. It went down in a purely partisan manner. Very sad to report that. But again, here we are in 2022, in the Virginia General Assembly, with a very tenuous hold on power. And I think frankly, some leftover bad feelings about changing election dates to November or for local elections. The Land Bank bills, good news there. Those bills both passed and went into effect just four days ago. And Catawba Hospital reimagining, I think that's a really great example of a regional effort, and Delegate Russell and his team and staff, and Senator Edwards' team and staff, just everybody in the community came together. So while there wasn't necessarily a bill to accomplish what was in your legislative program, as a practical effect, the state budget did have money in it, and that committee is already up and running, and very collaboratively. And so that's a really great news story for Roanoke region.
And that's a study, right, Ms. Bateman? That's a study that they're doing now?
Yes. Yes. Received something from Delegate Russell about three weeks ago. I think they had their first meeting. So yes, that is up and running. And the Virginia Museum of Transportation request, again, another example of a bill being carried over, but the funding was in the budget bill that passed, and it provided, provides half a million dollars in FY23, with language that reads that it's a one-time appropriation to the city for improvements at the Virginia Museum of Transportation. So that funding will flow through this city. Moving on to, you know, there's another bill in your program about the wonderful bill, the shock and compressive shock foundation, to create a state tax credit for automated external distributors. Well, the bill that was introduced in the House by a member of the Fairfax County delegation was heard, and there was just a lot of really great testimony, and frankly, a lot of really good advice to the foundation for some sort of free-market tools that they can use or that they might consider. And, you know, I keep on their mailing lists, and it looks like they are all about doing a lot of the things that the committee suggested. So I think that's a really good news story, and I know everybody really appreciated the city of Roanoke and their participation and encouragement of that endeavor. Quickly, very quickly, moving on to the state budget, I'm going to turn it over to Ron to talk about the regional accelerator in the Frayland Biomed Research Initiative.
Hey, you remember that the legislative package requested $10 million for the biomedical institute, their Frayland Institute? And we were very fortunate, and it was a true regional effort, to secure 15.7 million as a grant to the city for the renovation of the existing facility. The city is required to match that with 1.9 million, which from my understanding from the economic development staff is what the city planned on putting up anyway. This was really a Roanoke Valley success story. It was a large group of people involved in advocating for it, and it's a good example of what happens when the Valley comes together and works cooperatively for the same goal. And that money will flow through, the city will be the fiscal agent for that. On the, there's a lot of stuff in K-12, I'm going to let Kathy touch on that. Public safety, the city's policy position ahead to some payable localities to enact ordinances to exceed statewide standards, dealing with the sale of possession stores carrying firearms. The General Assembly didn't increase, did not increase the authority of localities to do so, and several attempts to roll back. Some of the gun violence prevention measures passed earlier in the '20 and '21 session were beaten back, but they will be back. The big news here in public safety is 599 funding, 47 million over the biennium. While it's not, it doesn't completely make 599, 599, let me back up, 599 should grow commensurate with the growth in the general fund revenue. It has not done so, and certainly while this does not make it whole, it is a huge step forward, and it's one that we'll want to keep on our radar for '23, and we'll touch on that again. Also, the General Assembly included eight million for firearm violence prevention grant funds, and another five million over the biennium for Operation Ceasefire Grant Funds. There's a fair amount of money out there in the Department of Criminal Justice Services for anti-violence initiatives, for firearms, anti-violence initiatives in particular, that the city may want to take advantage of. If, I know you're taking advantage of some, but there's a huge bump coming as of, a couple days ago. Also, the General Assembly approved 75 million in ARPA funds for one-time ramps for agencies to support equipment purchases and training. They anticipate everything from body cameras to specialized training for incident responses. Again, that will be flowing through DCJS, and they will be issuing guidelines for that probably later this summer. Kathy, I'm going to kick it over to you for the big items in K-12.
Thank you, Ron, and good morning, everyone. I look forward to working more closely with you, and I'm happy to be able to be here. As Ron mentioned, significant investments in K-12, historic, and frankly, we have finally floated above the high watermark from 2009, pre-recession, when we look at it for people allotment. Keeping in mind that the $3 billion in federal money that flowed to schools had a maintenance of effort requirement in both fiscal year '22 and fiscal year '23, and so we knew the investments would be really big there to ensure the maintenance of effort. The General Assembly actually did exceed the maintenance of effort requirement in both fiscal year '22 and '23, and maintain those numbers, or maintain the additional investments, particularly in at-risk add-on, into fiscal year '24. It's something to keep in mind, though, if we look for, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. Incredibly important. However, I will tell you that, and I've heard this consistently, as you all heard, I keep directly from the Governor Northwoods administration, as Deputy Secretary for K-12, we had questions consistently about wanting to know how local governments and school divisions were using their ESIR funds. Those are the COVID dollars that flow directly through the state to the local school divisions. This budget included language that requires all school divisions, they'll have to report through the Department of Education in November of '23 and '24, how they intend to spend those dollars. There seems to be the sense that I got, and Ron, Laura, shake your head if I'm off on this assessment, that the General Assembly really wants to make sure those dollars are being spent down, especially as they look at continuing to make investments, particularly one-time or short-term investments in schools. And so keeping in mind that the federal requirement has, there's a maintenance of effort requirement for local governments as well here. Again, when we look at what's coming, that's something to track and monitor, is that we're not, the General Assembly is not putting any local government in a place of potentially supplanting some federal dollars or local dollars with federal dollars. So we'll watch that closely. But all the rest is really good news in the budget, and that's really good news, too, other than that reporting, and wanting to track that. A couple of few big-ticket items, sales tax, and we may talk more about this, rolling back the sales tax in Virginia, a piece, a portion of that that flowed back to school divisions to offset local share. That was not only included in the budget to hold divisions harmless or to return those payments, they actually codified language. Conference bill and what that should look like didn't, as they like to say, see the light of day, but we did get budget, we got actually codified language in the budget that does put a permanent fix in place for the portion that would return to school divisions to offset that share, hundreds of eight million dollars over the biennium, again, with permanent language, which was an important fight this entire session. Also included, which is a big move that many of us have been fighting for for a long time, we saw about a 25% reversal of what's called the Support Staff Cap. It was a funding methodology established in 2010 through budget language, and again, significant investment there, established only in budget language, just like, you know, we've had to track the Support Staff Cap over all of these years, we'll certainly continue to track that. Another big piece is VRS, insuring up the unfunded liability and really removing the overuse in many folks' assessments of the literary fund to pay down the teacher... overuse in many folks' assessments of the literary fund to pay down the teacher retirement unfunded liability. We saw a general fund of dollars put in fiscal year twenty-two, put towards reducing the unfunded liability and a commitment of two hundred and fifty million dollars with a revenue trigger. So again, we've seen this before, if, if revenues hit the targets, then the two hundred and fifty dollars, two hundred and fifty dollars, two hundred and fifty million dollars general fund will go to, to continue to pay down that unfunded liability. So again, from a local government perspective, that really helps with the cost associated, the local share cost associated. And then the other really, really big news in budget was the at-risk add-on and just the historic investments. Again, when we look at where we started, you know, this time, four years ago, six years ago, with the only direct funding stream that we have in Virginia that goes directly to the number of our students that, that have, that meet the free or reduced lunch requirement and the poverty threshold, this is the one stream we have, and, you know, studies demonstrate how much more it takes to get those students up to grade level and ensure that they are on a trajectory towards on-time graduation and success post-secondary. We did see, it was a decrease from the introduced, but a significant increase to thirty-six percent free maximum percentage for the at-risk add-on in both fiscal year twenty-three and fiscal year twenty-four. There are significant changes and improvements as well in some of the SOQ staffing requirements. Those are codified, so we would expect to see those maintained in budget. Those budget items will include most, most closely related to reading specialist increases in the number of students, those positions that will be required through standards of quality and also principles in every building. Most Virginians are generally surprised when we say that the state did not fund a principal in every building, and that has changed effectively, as Laura said just a few days ago, and the state will be funding their share. Also included in budget, which was priority on your legislative agenda this session, was many of the recommendations for the Commission on School Modernization, Construction and Modernization, three big items that they adopted. The first one was four hundred million dollars in fiscal year twenty-three for new grants. The Board of Education is going to be establishing the guidelines in those. It changes kind of how we do, how we look at investments and prioritizing our most in need school divisions when we look at these projects. I do have a note here that you all have already touched on, and how great it is to have Dr. Seaver appointed to the Board of Education. Again, when we think about the board making many of these decisions, it's going to be great to have regional representation clearly from Reno City as well. So I have my shout out in my notes, we said it, so really, really great for Reno City. And there are second piece of that is the formula-based grants. And then a third part is really modernizing the literary fund to be more reflective of the costs associated with these major construction projects. The highest loan amount available prior to the changes just made was seven point five million dollars. It's very difficult to build much of a school or much of, much of what you can apply for the literary fund with seven point five million, so that was increased to twenty-five million, which is more reflective of what we know to be the costs. Not included in a major recommendation out of the Commission for School Modernization and Construction was the ability of local referendum on a local sales tax to go towards school construction. I think it was really counter to the action the General Assembly took this session related to tax relief across the board in Virginia, so it was not taken up. I know it's something that the Small and Rural School Coalition is really looking towards, and it was a major recommendation from the School Modernization Commission, so we'll see where that heads. Those are the big-ticket items that I had, again, historic investments in K twelve, much of it written into budget, so just like everything in the K twelve space, you'll have to watch it year to year, but really good improvements and really good investments for schools, and particularly those school divisions with high percentage of students who meet the federal threshold of poverty.
Back to you, Laura.
Okay, thanks. So all looking towards the next session, on the twenty-twenty-three session gets underway January eleventh, and this will be a short session here. And pre-filing for of bills for the twenty-twenty-three session begins in just a couple of weeks, I think it's July the eighteenth. There were approximately a hundred and sixty-six bills that were carried over into, from, from the twenty-two session to the twenty-three session, but effectively, that means if they're not dealt with by, I think, December one, they're, they are, they're dead, if you will. But having said that, I think it's instructive to see the bills they did decide to carry over, because I think they will very definitely be reintroduced. And I'm not going to hit on all of them that have local government impact, I'm just going to hit on some ones that I think might follow your, your legislative program in past years and, and be helpful. And we're happy to provide this entire report, written report to you as a, you know, if it's helpful as you put together your twenty-twenty-three program. So the first one is a, a bill that creates a, a property tax exemption for disabled veterans and surviving spouses. And this bill would actually entitle those two categories of folks to a refund retroactive to their date of eligibility. And there's, the refund is exempt from the statute of limitations, applications for the correction of an assessment. So obviously, that would have a pretty huge impact on local government budgets if there's no statute of limitations and, and you could go, go back to provide, you know, refunds. It's a lot. Historic preservation and filing a historic designation application. This bill says that the filing of the applications shall stay a locality from issuing a permit to raise or demolish a proposed historic landmark building or structure until thirty days after a final decision by the governing body. Short-term rentals, the Airbnb issue and locality's ability to restrict, we anticipate that there will be an effort, and that issue will be back in the twenty-twenty-three session. And there was a zoning wireless communication infrastructure application process bill that was seen as very onerous for local governments, and it was very controversial in committee. We expect that, too, will be back. On the, also on the subject of disabled veterans and surviving spouses, there was a, a bill by Senator Stewart, who's from the Fredericksburg region, who, this, this bill would require the, the state actually to subsidize the real estate tax relief for disabled veterans and surviving spouses if more than one percent of the local government's real estate tax base is lost due to that state mandate. Of course, it's a great bill, but of course, it did not, it did, it was carried over, so I, I expect it'll be back. Those are the ones that I just highlighted, that I thought, that we thought might be of most interest to you. Let's see, there, there's a, a bill that we expect will be back dealing with security of government, local government databases and data communications. There's an ongoing study through the Chief Information Officer of the state, and so, so we know that's a foot. And now I'm going to turn it back to Ron for his prognostification.
Yeah, well, you know, some of you maybe old enough to remember the lady Chuck Knob, who was basketball coach at South Carolina, later VCU, and a couple of other stops. And Chuck used to say, he who makes, he who has a crystal ball eats glass, and I think Larry Sabatin has done something, said something like that, too. But at the risk of doing so, let me talk about some things that we will foresee as being issued in twenty-twenty-three. Let me start with public safety, since we've already started to touch on that, and I mentioned five nine nine funding. I think we'll, I expect to see additional attempts to repeal the bail reform statute. There were attempts this year passed the House, died in close, the, some of the changes died in close votes in the Senate. The, in light of the Supreme Court decision on, on guns and public safe, and, oh, excuse me, the regulation of guns in public places, while I think Virginia's statute is probably sound, there will be those who will argue that it conflicts with the Supreme Court decision, and will make attempts to kind of roll back some of that authority or, or to clarify. I think we're also definitely going to see more, both sides of, of the gun violence issue, we're going to see bills to allow open carry, we'll, we'll see, and repeal red flag. On the other side, we'll see bills to limit the magazine capacity and ban assault weapons. So firearms are not going to go away, especially given all the stuff that's going on so far this year. And there will be a lot of discussion and vitriol and hyperbole on the issue of increasing homicides across the state and nation. So you may want to weigh in on that. And to the broader issues, it is an election year, members are, we saw a definite pattern this year, members not voting on their current districts, members are voting based on where their new district is. So that's, that's something to keep in mind. I'm going to go out on a limb here and predict that the next session, the twenty-twenty-three session, will be focused on the economy. I think it's quite possible we'll be in a recession. The state's finances at this point look good. Well, we, when the final numbers for fiscal year twenty-two are reported in August to the General Assembly, it'll show another tremendous size balance, general, year-end general fund balance. The, the growth required in the, in the new budget for the, for the second year of the budget is, is none, and state is socked away impressive amounts in its reserves. But if the economy does slow down or enter recession, you, and, and the thing to watch in Virginia is the, is employment, because approximately seventy percent of our general fund income comes from income taxes. It's extraordinarily highly dependent on income taxes and, and fairly unique across the board. But watch employment, because if employment declines, income taxes are going to decline. If employment stays high, then the state economy will, will, will stay fairly stable. Now, as it rolls into the, to the local level, it means that state funds will be fairly stable, but you all, every locality is still depending on property taxes. You know, the unknown is what will happen to the values. We've seen values just continue to skyrocket, as I'm sure, like, run of, like, every city and county and state, we've seen assessments just keep going up and up and up, and you hear the complaints from the citizens, but that's, that's something to, to watch very closely. I think we will see further attempts to remove the remainder of the grocery tax. As you know, the General Assembly removed the state portion of the, eliminated the remaining state portion of, of the tax on groceries, but left the local one percent. Now, I would remind everyone that that's a local option tax, meaning localities had the, when it was put into place, localities were authorized to adopt a one percent sales tax. And I'm not sure, and I'd kick ass, Mr. Spencer, this might be something Timmy want to look into at some point, but localities may also have the option to repeal that one percent in, in regards to groceries. I'm not sure whether the General Assembly contemplates that, but it, I would remind you, it is a local option tax that was passed, and if you look back in the sixties, when it was probably put in place in Reno, it was an action of the City Council that imposed that tax. So I see, I think we'll see more on that as we go forward. Again, the governor doesn't like to lose, he's going, I expect him to revisit the gasoline tax. And as we, either a, a, a gas tax holiday or limiting the increase in, in the gas tax annually to cap it. Right now, it is tied to the cost of, to inflation. And as inflation goes up, that tax increases, but I think he'll try to cap that, as he tried to before. In addition, as the governor turns more attention to his national profile and economic development, I would not be surprised to see some attempt to make changes in the corporate income tax structure. That affects the state, but it, it's state general fund revenues more than anything. So that, that's the money side of, the, the revenue side of it. Other issues, and I'll kick it over to Kathy for education, last, marijuana, the marijuana statute still messes. There's a lot of unfinished business when it comes to how we deal with it legalization and, and more importantly, the retail sale. In effect, I believe we create a black market right now, and, and a lot of uncertainty for a lot of people, and the General Assembly is going to be pushed to step up and do something about that as the timeline for full authorization of retail sales occurs, hits us in twenty-three. The, the culture wars, as we all know, have never really gone away, they've just simmered for now, as they're back with a vengeance. We're going to see lots of bills on both sides to deal with abortion in light of the Supreme Court decision that Dobbs, Dobbs improved case. You're going to see bills to enshrine the right to abortion in state constitution or certainly state law. You'll also see attempts to, as the governor's already moving forward to limit a woman's right to choose. There are a number of, of public education, both higher education and K twelve, will be the subject of considerable legislative interest next year. Not only for money, that it was still unfinished business on the Support Staff Cap and on construction, but, and I'll kick it over to Kathy, but it starts with accreditation and rolls out from there. Kathy, you want to talk about some of the potential issues we expect next year for public ed?
Yeah, absolutely, Ron. Again, you know, the governor, Governor's Day one agenda included options for parents when it came to their, where they choose to send their child. We saw an expansion of our lab school. Laboratory schools have been available in Virginia, which I think it's ten or eleven years now. The funding just frankly hasn't been there to support these schools and our institutions of higher education. A hundred million dollars in the first year towards startup grants to these lab schools. There was an effort, and I expect this to continue into next session, to have a permanent funding source, frankly, for the students who choose to enroll in our lab schools, and that would have those portions of funding, both state and federal, follow that student to the lab school. That was rejected in the Senate, so that amendment, that was a governor's amendment, did not pass, but I would anticipate we look, we see, particularly as the Board of Education begins to get applications for new lab schools or expansions of lab schools, the governor and those members of the General Assembly supportive of such efforts to look at a permanent funding source, and that would be the most, that would be frankly the way to do it, is to have student funding follow the student. We did see charter school bills this session that were rejected in the Senate, massaged in the House, frankly, a bit. I do anticipate, Delegate Davis out of Virginia Beach has a long history and a passion for really establishing a path towards more charters. And, and he had a couple of bills this session that he tried to maneuver in different ways, sometimes with, sometimes without the governor's support. At the end, the governor was very supportive, but that bill just, it was a little too late in session for it to really gain traction. But I anticipate efforts to expand charter schools, again, or constitution grants that authority can look at school boards. But I think that, interestingly, again, a Supreme Court decision out of Maine that allows for public dollars to go towards religious schools also expands the willingness of some to look at some additional options there. So we will track those really, really closely. Important, and Ron talked about the standards of accreditation, the Board of Education is our state education authority, so all decisions run through the Board of Education. The governor, in, in early fourth part of his term, has given, has been given a really unique, is in a really unique position to have just recently named five members to the Board of Education, that gives a majority of the board to Governor Neinken's appointees. Typically, that wouldn't happen until after they had finished almost a year and a half in office, but the House and Senate could not agree on Comprey's appointments to, to adopt the appointments that Governor North had made during the off-session, so the governor had, this governor had two, plus these three additionals. Again, we're really excited, and it's great for both public schools. Again, we're really excited and it's great for both public schools and regionally that Dr. Seibert is one of those appointees, but I will just mention that of the five, one is a leader in the private school space, one is a funder of charter schools, and the third is a leading opponent to equity efforts that have been made particularly related to governor schools. So I think very, very telling on where this governor would like to see the Board of Education had, you know, accreditation. Demonstrating our schools are not meeting standard is the best way possible to build a case that we need more options. And so I would not be surprised to have the board review many recommendations from either the state superintendent or from staff coming through the superintendent that would make changes to our accreditation standards to potentially make that possible. So lots to watch. And again, a very telling kind of read, you don't have to read the TVs, the TVs literally exploded in front of us. So we saw the appointees, but again, super excited that Dr. Seibert is going to be starting on that board with his expertise and regional knowledge that he has. Again, watching budget, so much of K-12 happens in budget and ensuring, we've also seen more and more every session, every, it feels like every session, but particularly in the last few years of legislating through budget, and so tracking that as well, particularly in the K-12 space, just when you think a bill has met its final, its final destination, you know, language can appear in budget that, you know, as you all, as you all saw earlier in Laura's explanation of the budget action, didn't turn out exactly where you wanted, but you got something there. We can see certainly in the pageant space, some of that. So tracking all of those things, but much to follow. And as Ron said, in the higher space, very similar things as well, with the governor clearly wanting to have a fingerprint on decisions made at the community college level, but we also saw in the Board of, the Board of Visitors appointments kind of up and down in the higher, in our higher institutions of higher education, where the governor would like those schools as well to have. So just, it's going to be a really interesting ride, is where I'll leave it, Ron, unless I've left something else.
Yeah, Ron had to step away for a few minutes, but I'm asked, I think we hit a lot and almost everything on 20, what's to come for 2023. So now I'd just like to turn it back over to Councilmember Bestbitch, and thank you all so much.
Well, thank you, Ms. Bateman, and I would look forward to receiving the full written report that you referenced earlier when you were going over some items. If you could send that to us, that would be great. I certainly have some comments and questions, but I'll go down the committee first and see what, what comments or questions folks have. We'll just go right down the line in alphabetical order and begin with Councilmember Cobb.
Good morning. Thank you, Ron and Laura and Kathy for an incredible overview. I really appreciated it. I think you really touched on the interesting dynamics of what we're going to see in this new General Assembly session, from the cultural, social types of issues to the focus on economy and employment. I think it's really critical that we, we keep those in front of us. I'm, of course, watching very closely the anti-violence initiatives, and we're very much in tune with the funding that's coming through. And I know I've raised this with Chief Roman before, but hearing about the, and I'm trying to go back through my notes here. I think it had to do, oh, the attempts to repeal the bail reform statute. I know that, that while a lot of the reform efforts have been very positive and helpful overall, I know that our police department, as well as many other departments, are experiencing some limitations in their ability to make arrests in cases related to, particularly to gun violence. And I'm hopeful that Chief Roman might be able to give us some guidance as a legislative committee as to what would be helpful to them in their efforts here locally and what we might be able to advocate for. I'm curious, with the three of you, what are some, I know you gave us an overview. Are there some, some specific areas of focus you might recommend that we look into in this area? Because I know that the reforms came about because of overpolicing in a lot of areas nationally, and, but it also created some limitations. And so, you know, the one example I can give, most recently in the last year, was an arrest that was made at a shooting downtown and the officer, you know, they were able to arrest the person, go down to the jail, and before the officer could actually finish writing up the reports, the person who was arrested had already been released and back out on the street. And to me, that complicates our ability to keep some of these offenders who are reoffending off the streets. And so I just wonder what kind of advice you have for us as we, as we look at giving our police, you know, this, this responsible authority that I believe our local department is very capable of and does well, while honoring that the intent of the reforms.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, let me specifically answer, try to answer your question about bail reform and then get a little bit broader. The patron of the bill, the reason it was put forth was Senator Creedes. And most of you know, he was a former Commercos attorney and longtime member of the State Crime Commission. His, his point was that the presumptions against bail that are in the statute are fairly, are not long time, are not long time creatures of the legislature. They were embedded in, I believe in the 80s in response to the crack epidemic in the late 80s. His point is that the problem is not the statute, it's the way that the magistrates in particular are reading the statute. They're automatically saying that, okay, there's no presumptions against bail, therefore by the fault, I'm going to grant you bail and totally ignore the other aspects of the statute that say if, if they, if the person poses a risk to public safety or potentially, or has, or the magistrate has a reasonable belief, he may not show up for court, then the magistrate can set bail. And so, and so we've seen the problem highlighted and some, some magistrates have understood that and the change has been fairly seamless. But in those places where it has, where the magistrates have simply taken the attitude, well, you know, you got, they remove presumptions, I'm going to grant you bail. It's been really visible and really controversial and people blame the law. I would suggest to you, what you might want to do is look around the specific types of cases where this is being done and engage in some conversation about the magistrate in terms of what types of information could, could be required of the magistrate, that the magistrate could be required to consider in statute. Right now, if you have a pretrial services agency, they're gathering a lot of this information for the court, but some of this information probably could be at the magistrate's level so that the magistrate can make an informed decision on what, particularly on whether or not the person poses a danger to risk to public safety before automatically pulling the trigger on a bail decision, saying, I got a release. That's where I would suggest that the discussions start initially and see where it goes from there. On the gun violence issue, as you pointed out, there's plenty of money. The issue is finding the best practice that's going to work for your particular situation. And that comes down, often comes down to a neighborhood by neighborhood strategy, as I'm sure the chief might as well.
Thank you, Ron, and that's actually a strategy that we're, we're focusing more in on here locally, identifying the kind of critical hotspot locations and getting resources to the neighbors and businesses within those neighborhoods. I have a number of things, but just, I'm just going to close, wrap up with one other, and that is, I know there's been frustration, speaking of Creedes, there's been frustration, and I feel it too locally, with the, the struggle to adopt more broad-based funding and support for mental health advocacy. We're seeing the effects of this locally in so many different ways. And while we have many extraordinary providers here locally, the, the mental health issue is at the top of everybody's list because it intersects with so many of the challenges we're seeing socially, whether it's homelessness, opioid epidemic, violence, you know, children trying to catch up from the effects of the pandemic. So what advice do you have for us in terms of advocating not only for mental health funding, but bills that can strengthen the infrastructure to provide support for mental health work throughout the state?
Yeah, the, I think the first one, the most critical one, top of the list, would be institutional staffing because of involuntary mental commitments, especially at the juvenile level as well as the, and as well as at the adult level. And the state provides the beds at last resort, which means in a lot of areas, it's the only, it's the only solution is the state. And the state institutions don't have the staff, so they've restricted capacity. And that's all been driven by staffing. The General Assembly made some strides in staffing, in improving salaries for staffing to help address the issue, but they didn't go as far as they could have, or perhaps as they should have. They took more than, while they took a big swing at it, they didn't, it's probably going to result in maybe a double, whereas they could have probably hit a home run if they increased salaries to the 80th percentile. We started out, I'll say institutional salaries started at the 10th percentile, they moved it to about the 60th. They probably should have gone, gone ahead for the rest and gone to the 80th percentile. So staffing and salaries are probably the most critical right now. And the, the second part, I would say, are provider reimbursements. There, you just can't provide some services for the amount of money that state, that state pays you. This is especially true for Medicaid patients.
Thank you. And just to, just to put on the list, incentives for economic development, how to work with localities to, to address the, the growth that we're continuing to see in Roanoke, but kind of look at the ways we can reduce some barriers to economic growth and incentivize in the, in the private industry, but in that private, public, private sector. And then how do we advocate for adding more teeth to code enforcement and how we're able to manage that locally? But thank you, Chairman Bestbitch, and that's all I have for now.
Yes, and we'll certainly get into that, the last couple of issues you raised as we move forward with, in the future committee meetings. Dr. Jamison's schedule obviously required that she was not able to stay for the rest of the meeting, so Dr. Seibert, if you would let her know that if she has any input that she wants to give, please send that to me and we'll take that up from there. And I'll recognize Councilmember Moon Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Bestbitch. I have no questions.
Okay, all right. How about Councilmember Price?
Just to say, it's good to meet this legislative team, and you certainly have given us all something, a lot to chew on, but I do want to just add my congratulations to Dr. Seibert. And I was, as those of you who know me, I was particularly, my ears picked up hearing some of the concerns coming up with our continuing attacks on public education. So I would just say that that certainly is one of the items that I, for one, will be following because hearing that there are those who may not be champions of public schools have been added to our, our state Board of Education is something very disconcerning. So thank you. That, those are the only comments I have, and I'm sure we'll have lots more conversations to be had. Thank you.
Well, thank you, and I certainly have to scratch my head sometimes as well, why certain people are appointed to boards that have a philosophy against the purpose of the board. So Councilmember Sanchez Jones.
Again, I just want to congratulate Dr. Seibert and his appointment to the Board of Education, and I just want to say it was about time that somebody from our region was appointed to the board.
It's been a while.
Yes.
Dr. Seibert.
Chairman Bestbitch, Vice Mayor, members of council, and, and our good friends from Advanced Strategy, thank you for this opportunity. Appreciate the kind words. As you all know, authority only exists in the body corporate at a legally called meeting. I look forward to representing our region, but it will be a body of nine, and so there'll be some interesting things. First meeting is actually this month, July 20th and 21st, I think it's a Wednesday, Thursday there, and so we look forward to that. Dr. Jamison left me a note before she had to head out for a doctor's appointment. She regrets she had to depart. Her question really is more of a tactical one in terms of what timeline you all may have in mind for the, for the process, for the priorities and positions. I can speak very generally to the timeline. So we had a school board legislative committee meeting back on April 19th, did sort of what a Devantis did for you today, a postmortem of the bulk part of the, of the General Assembly session, and went through what we advocated for and against and where those things fell and what we see on the, on the horizon. Moving ahead, the, the committee then asked, and this was with the chair and vice chair at the time, to, to ask staff to be involved. So we have reached out to different division leaders, asked them to look at their area of responsibility and the legislative positions of the prior year and what's coming on the horizon, and we received a number of pieces for that. We anticipate that here in late July or August, we will have, the school board will have another legislative committee meeting to be, again, again, kind of fleshing out and putting some meat on the bones of the big ideas they have. And so, and of course, we look forward to sharing those with you and being collaborative as well as, we look forward to continued communication with Advanced Strategies.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And let me just say that our, our timeline at this point would be to have a legislative committee like this on the first Monday of each month, so the next meeting would be August 1, preferably at the same timeframe. As soon as we get through the formalities of opening up the nine o'clock session, we can go into the legislative, we can go into the legislative committee meeting. So we would have that August, September, October, with the goal of finalizing a legislative program at the first Monday in November that can then be presented to the council for adoption. And the first Monday in December, we would invite our legislators to come and, and share with them what our concerns and priorities are. So that, just to answer that question.
That'd be very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Vice Mayor Whiteboy, I think has always had some concerns about what the state thinks is an appropriate amount to, to reimburse certain Medicaid services. So I'll kick it over to you.
Always. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you all, Kathy, Ron, and Laura, and everyone that put together that presentation. It was packed full of stuff, and so I agree with Mr. Bestbitch, we definitely need the , the written report. But I just have a couple of questions. I'm going to go back to budget. Just, you know, I know we got 115 million, I think, from the feds on affordable housing. I think Senator Keen and Senator Warner made that announcement. And Roanoke, I think, got 156,000, which, that's pretty much one house. So, you know, I'm really concerned about our housing situation, and everybody's talking about affordable housing, but we just need housing, period. So if there's any money that the state can, can share with us, that would be actually a wonderful thing. And I know we're always asking for more money, but I think housing is really imperative at this point, so we've got to do something. And my only other concern is about sustainability. I don't think that we have done enough or, or really prepared our infrastructure here in Roanoke City for EVs. And I know that we have a couple of charging stations, but they're, you know, seven, eight hour charging stations, and we had a couple of events this year, the Ironman and the race this weekend, and I know people are driving EVs. And we have the two superchargers, one in the county, I think Cave Spring, I think they're both in the county, Peters Creek Road, I could be wrong. Do we, do we have any, Mr. Cowell, here in the city? No, okay.
It's possible that the new sheets that's under construction will include that, but I don't know for sure.
A supercharger. Yeah, we've got to do something because, I mean, that, you know, we, people are Yeah, we've got to do something because, I mean, that, you know, we, people are progressing, and, and we want to, to progress along with them. So if there's any funding out there, Ron, you know, when they start talking about budget for sustainability, Roanoke is, you know, we're the, the largest city in, in this region, and I know that there are people out there driving EVs that are going to need to charge them. I have a friend who's concerned all the time about where to go and how far to go because she can't charge it. But that was the only thing as far as budget. And of course, back to the charter, that, that is really ridiculous, that some, that we cannot get that charter change done because we're being penalized by a particular senator who thinks that we should not have changed our election dates to November, which is the law now, and, and they have done, I don't know how many charter changes, and, but Roanoke, for some reason, can't get it through. I will say publicly thank you to Senator Spruill, who fought, you know, very, I mean, he was a serious advocate for Roanoke City, and he is the senator for the 5th District, Chesapeake and Suffolk. I'm not sure where our representatives were during that spirited debate, but I do thank Senator Spruill for, for making that attempt to get that charter change. And I agree with, I don't know if you said it, Kathy or Laura, that it is, it's political and it's unfortunate. So I hope that for our housekeeping, that we were able to get that done. We all know that it's the law of the land for now, and that we, we will be voting in November, but, you know, we just wanted to have that charter changed just to make sure that we had our charter in order. So hopefully it will, it will get, you know, that just makes me so mad because I know it's personal, and it's just ridiculous. But I'm done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I would like to make, I would like to make that Roanoke wasn't singled out in that regard. There are some other localities that were doing the same sort of housekeeping and ran, you know, ran into the same issues, so please don't feel singled out in that regard.
No, I just.
I understand what you're saying, Ms. Bateman. At the same time, I think we have a particular situation here in Roanoke that doesn't necessarily apply to other localities around the Commonwealth. And perhaps the best thing for us to do is to find an opportunity to ask Senator Soudeline to explain to us who is hurt if this charter change is approved and who benefits for continuing to block it, especially as Vice Mayor Whiteboyd said, it's now required across the board. Everybody has to have their elections in November as things stand today, so it's just really puzzling to us, I think. And I would also comment on your, your, your comments about the EVs. I think part of what we need to look at is how do we partner with the private sector, the public and the private sector working together? Because, you know, the localities, state government have never operated gasoline stations. That's been a private enterprise, and I think this is, in some ways, very analogous to that, that if you, you need gas to, to be able to drive your car, you don't get that from your local or state government. And if you need electricity to be able to operate your car, then perhaps the private sector needs to step up a little bit more and provide, provide that service as well. Let me just kind of go down my list, if I could, quickly. I think on the unpaid solid waste collection fees, that I'll meet again with Treasurer Powers, our local treasurer here, and then see what legislators we might be able to approach in terms of getting a patron for that bill. I'm glad to hear about the progress on the smoke alarm requirements. I think that getting some input from the Department of Housing and Community Development should be very helpful with that. If I understood a comment earlier, that there were a number of bills from different localities or requests from different localities regarding outdoor smoking restrictions, if you could kind of put together a list of those, and maybe we can work with some other localities that have similar concerns and, and try to develop some joint advocacy on that issue, that would be very helpful as well. As you mentioned, the land bank legislation passed. I had an opportunity to touch base with Mr. Collins from our city attorney's office the other day when we had the investiture of the school board members, and we think that we're okay with that. He's going to get back with Ms. Lewis over at TAP and get her input on that, and perhaps what we need to do is just keep an eye on that for the next year or so to see how well it works and then to see if, if we need to make any tweaks from there. On the, on the 599 funding, I, I know there's no guarantees, and as you said, that the amount that was approved this year doesn't really make us whole for all the years, but, but do you see that going forward as something that's going to be at least better in the future than it has been in the past? Or can you tell yet?
I don't think you can tell. I think it depends on the interests of the governor and the General Assembly. And the key, from my perspective, is having the governor included in his introduced budget. The most successful, the longest period where we had 599 grow commensurate with the general fund revenue growth was under Governor Gilmore, and was a priority for his Public Safety Secretary. And it was always, if he included it in his introduced budget, if it's a, if he passed it, if we have to wait on rely on the legislature, it becomes more of an aptified and much more difficult to do. And if money's tight, they're less, they'll be less inclined to do it.
Yeah, I, I know that this has been a perpetual concern for the Virginia Municipal League, so perhaps we can continue to work with them and any other localities that they identify that are particularly concerned about that. The grant opportunities are great, are great. I think that the city manager and, and city staff are on top of that and in a position to, to file grant applications for that funding. On the, on the 1% for grocery tax, you know, do I think that we should be charging people an extra 1% for the groceries? Absolutely not. But do I think that if we're not going to do that, we have to figure out some other way to replace that revenues? Yes, 100%. So I, I just wonder about that, and, and a number of other things that you talked about in, in terms of taxes, you know, it's always interesting to me on these property tax breaks for disabled veterans or whomever, if the General Assembly thinks that they need a tax break, why they don't give them credit on their state taxes instead of taking money out of the local budgets has always been a question in my mind. You know, it doesn't cost them anything to pass that, so, so naturally, that's advantageous. But what I'm really getting at here is, do you see, especially given the fact that unless employment really tanks, as you alluded to earlier, is there any appetite for looking at a real restructuring of the tax system so that since, since the income tax is really where revenue is coming from across the board these days, and the real estate tax no longer really makes sense in terms of the wealthiest people having the largest amount of land or property, is there any appetite for looking at restructuring the tax system in general so that local governments are not so reliant on real estate taxes, and perhaps the income taxes can be somehow shared between the Commonwealth and localities?
The Senate has a group looking at that. In fact, the Senate position going into the budget conference was that the governor's doubling of the standard deduction and the, and earned income tax credit that was proposed by Governor Northland should both be kicked over to that study committee for, to look at and come back with a recommendation in the 2023 session. So there is a group that's looking at, at the tax structure because of the various kinds of things you raised.
Well, please keep us advised on that as well, I'm sure you will. Laura mentioned that the pre-filing starts on the 18th. Do you know what the deadline is for pre-filing legislation for the 2023 session?
We've not seen a procedural resolution yet, so I don't have that answer, but as soon as we know, we'll let you know.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
I think that to be safe, I'd look at, if internally, I'd look at Thanksgiving as my deadline right now.
Okay, sometime around Thanksgiving. That, that certainly makes sense, yes. Let me just say, it's, it's good to meet Kathy. Thank you for, for joining our team, and we look forward to continuing to work with, with you. And again, we'll plan for the next legislative committee to be on Monday, August 1. I would like to take just a moment or two to, again, go down the line and see if there are other issues or concerns that are percolating in any of our committee members' minds. And rather than call on each person, I'll just ask you to raise your hand if you have something at this point that you'd like to put forward. If not, be thinking about that over the next four weeks or so, and be ready to come back on August 1 with any other issues that you think we should consider for the program, and I will pass that request on to the city manager as well. I hope that we can get input from city staff on any issues that they're concerned about a little more timely maybe than we did this last year so that we can, we can get that together. I had spoken with Mr. Cowell about concerns about code enforcement and the, the limitations on what we can really do. I think a lot of times people expect our, our code enforcement staff to be able to do a lot of things that the statutes don't really allow them to do. So for the August 1 meeting, Mr. Cowell suggested that Mr. Chittam back there in the back might be a good person to sort of give us an overview of what are the barriers, what are the, the problems that they run into in trying to deal with these sometimes quite deplorable situations that people have to live next to or across the street from or around the corner, whatever. So if, if we could be prepared to add that to the agenda for the August 1 meeting and see if there are some things that we could put on the legislative agenda to try to help improve that situation. And if there's nothing further, again, thank you to our partners at Advanis for being with us this morning. Really appreciate you carving that time out. I think what we'll do next time, if you're able to join us, is sort of flip things around and go through the committee's discussion first and then get your response to, to what you've heard that morning, if that worked for everybody. And with that, Madam Vice Mayor, the legislative committee meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we are back in session for our 9:00 AM informal session, and I will turn it back over to Mr. Cowell, who was just about to introduce our two briefings.
Thank, thank you, Mayor, or Vice Mayor. We'll move to the two briefings, and as mentioned, we have two of them. One is dealing with a code amendment, which the city attorney will mention, and the second is the public safety update.
If we, I just realized our clerk wasn't.
You did take a break for just a minute.
Yeah, we'll take, we'll take, we'll take a few minutes. Two-minute recess. Two-minute recess, because we got, yeah, we want to get through these briefings. Two minutes.
Yes, sir.[1419.15]
Two minutes. Now, call back to order and we will continue with our briefings.
Good morning. How are you doing?
Good morning.
Have two proposed amendments that, of course, not asking for any action today. Trying to get into the habit of any code amendments. We will come first meeting in the morning, do a presentation, answer any questions. And then if your approval is there, we'll look to adopt second meeting of the month. Here we have a situation I consider housekeeping. It's one of those things that, quite frankly, if you look around the state, the state also has this. How many people remember in May of 2017, we had a bear downtown? Everyone remember that? Right up the tree over here. And they used a tranquilizer dart to take it down. Now, what was used to shoot that tranquilizer into the bear? A pneumatic gun. We have an ordinance that's been on there on our books for years, probably dates back to the 40s. Because has anyone ever heard something called a gravel shooter? I don't think it exists today. It's still in our ordinance. However, I've talked to an attorney with the Virginia Department of Wildlife Resources who raised that as a concern since it didn't carve out an exception for having wildlife officials utilize pneumatic guns. I tried to explain, hey, back in 2017, we didn't have an issue. And I explained that also back in the early 2000s, federal government sent in a pigeon culling group that used pneumatic weapons to cull our pigeons at night to limit our pigeon, and that wasn't a problem. He said, but you don't have there technically, even though this is under the instruction and request of the police department, you don't have an exception. So I'm proposing that we just clean that up to add in all law enforcement officers, conservators of the peace, animal wardens, wildlife officials, and similar groups approved by the chief in writing shall be exempted when they're performing their official duties. So I think that's clean on a pneumatic gun. And then we have, of course, prohibited firearms on certain properties. And a lot of times, where would we find the bear? On city property in our parks, which we've. So again, carve out the exception in extended conservators of the peace, animal wardens, and wildlife officials acting in their official capacity. Here to answer any questions, just housekeeping. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll put this on our next meeting.
Thank you.
And Vice Mayor and counsel, our second briefing is the annual public safety update. You will recall that each year, we have both the chief of police come and present to counsel just that, an update on annual public safety information. And similarly, we have the fire chief come and present as well. Couple of years ago, in order to give ample time for discussion and for the presentation, we separated those two. So our expectation is that in one of the upcoming, a couple of meetings, Fire Chief Hovak will be present to give the annual update on the fire safety side of things. So again, this one will focus on police and the chief will be presenting this information.
Thank you.
Well, good morning, Vice Mayor, members of council. It is good to be back with you again. So this morning, what I intend to do is just take a few brief moments and just give you an overview generally how we have done in a similar fashion of 2021. So obviously, you know, our focus has been and will continue to be gun violence. That has definitely been our number one priority at the police department. And in some cases, at the expenses, at the expense of other things that we traditionally do. However, we have all talked many times about the issue of gun violence, and we certainly believe that the concerted effort that we are giving to gun violence is certainly worth it. So with that being said, in usual fashion, we'll just kind of go over total calls for service. And we broke these down into the zones of the city. So total calls for service in Zone 4, which is northwest, was a little over 26,000. Zone 3, which is southwest, 18,213 calls for service. Zone 2, which is the northeast section of the city, 22,667 calls. And last but certainly not least, Zone 1, total calls for service with 22,905 calls for service. When you extract all of the traffic stops and things of that nature, the total calls for service citywide was 94,752 calls for service. And I am sure all of you have a copy of that. It is also broken down to show you the police-initiated calls for service, the number of traffic stops, and the number of traffic stops that resulted in traffic summonses as well. So all of that information is there for you. Next, I'll talk about our calls for service during the day. As we see here depicted in this chart, our officers stay busy just about every day during the week. Over the 30 years that I've been in law enforcement, and most of them obviously here with the city, I have never seen sort of the equal number of calls for service per day like that. Generally, you have your slower days, you have your busier days. But here, as you can see, in many cases, a Saturday, which is traditionally busy for public safety, is just as busy as a Monday. And so I put that graph in there just to kind of show you that our officers are working hard daily. We often joke at the police department that there is no downtime anymore. And this is a call for service by year. You can see the contrast between 2018 through 2021, just a visual depiction of the calls. Of course, there's less amount of calls in 20 and 2021, obviously because of COVID. That contributed to less calls for service and of course, what we responded to as well. And the crime comparisons, 2020 versus 2021, we'll see that in Part 1 violent crime, we were up 7%, 7.77%. And you see that in that subtotal category. The raw numbers is basically, we've had 386 incidents of Part 1 violent crime in 2020. And in 2021, we had 416. Of course, each category is broken down for you to review. And then a total of Part 1 crime to include the burglary, larceny, motor vehicle theft, and arson, those categories were down 2.8%, netting an overall decrease in crime by 1.8%. I am sure at the end you will all have questions about that. So if we need to refer to that slide again, I will certainly come back to it. Citywide Part 1 crime by category per year, 2018 through 2021, you see the difference between Part 1 and Part 1 property crime and Part 1 violent crime. For 2021, as I mentioned earlier, there was 416 Part 1 violent crimes and a total of 3,760 Part 1 property crimes. And moving on to gun violence incidents, obviously, you see here, the chart I have depicts 2018 through 2021. The blue is indicated homicides, the orange is indicated aggravated assaults, and the gray is indicated as domestic aggravated assaults. And as you can see here, much like across the country, in 2021, that was one of our highest years. We are certainly not insulated to what we are seeing across the country here in the city of Roanoke. That number is concerning. And obviously, we are working very hard to do everything that we can, along with other law enforcement across not only the state but the country, to try to come up with innovative ways in which we can push that number down. This is a visual depiction of the gun violence over the calendar year 2021. As you can see, the blue dots is a gunshot wound and a homicide victim. So in other words, two people were victimized, two or more. The black dots obviously show the gunshot wounds that we have experienced here in the city. And the red dots are lone homicides. And so this is just a visual depiction. Obviously, the light blue area is our northwest area. The light green area is our Zone 2, our northeast area. And obviously, just a bit more additional information, obviously, we had 15 murders that were due to gun violence here in the city in 2021. Of course, as I mentioned earlier, 50 aggravated assaults with where a firearm was used for a total of 61 victims, and then two incidents in which both offenses occurred. And that's indicated by the blue dot. Wanted to put a slide in here that really spoke to theft of firearms. As you can see, over the course of 2021, there were 187 firearms stolen. And then we've just listed the circumstance in which that firearm was stolen. And I'll just go over the top three categories for the sake of time here. As you can see at the top of the list, there were 93 incidents in which a firearm was stolen from a vehicle. I can tell you that the majority of those were unlocked vehicles. All other larcenies, which is, you know, a firearm was left somewhere in which someone doing not meaning well was able to steal that firearm. And then, of course, in burglaries, those were the top three categories. In 18 incidents of burglaries in 2021, firearms were taken out of homes or businesses. Then, of course, at the bottom, it's just a breakdown across the zones on where those firearms were stolen from. Of course, our police department has several officers working as task force officers. Obviously, you know, I've spoken many times about our officers who are working with our federal partners, state partners as well. And again, the priority for the police department is gun violence. And so whatever we can do to interrupt that cycle of gun violence is what we have been doing. Many times, you will find that guns and drugs are associated. And so we endeavor to make an impact in both categories in an attempt to reduce violent crime. And certainly, we understand that even with the arduous, long, hard work of combating gun violence, that we still have to be very involved with our community. Obviously, the foundational concepts of our police department is community engagement, transparency. So obviously, we endeavor to continue to partner with our community, not only when it comes to gun violence, but on other issues as well. We try to be visible in our community as much as we can. And obviously, these are some of the pictures that just kind of display some of the things that you all are very familiar with, what we do in the community. However, I can say that in the very hard work of combating violent crime, the community piece, we are not always available to attend those events that we so would like to attend. Certain times when there is a shooting, especially over the course of the weekend or something like that, typically, those resources come from those officers who were originally assigned to do community events, when we have to increase our presence in an area to ensure that we're doing everything we can to alleviate what we call retaliatory violence. And so sometimes, our footprint has not been as visible in our community in past events. There's been several instances in which I've gotten emails and phone calls asking, this was a great event, where were you guys at? And so I just, me and my staff, we take that opportunity to really explain the why behind our absence. And obviously, we serve a great community. 99.9% of the time, our citizens understand why we were not present for those events. Again, reset. You've heard me talk many times about reset and the work of the volunteers and Lloyd Merchant and everyone associated and affiliated with reset. But obviously, they've had some milestones, a total of 39 deployments to neighborhoods in the city that experienced traumatic events. And of course, you've heard me say, and I'll say again, that the goal of the reset team, obviously, is to not go to these neighborhoods and sort of, you know, interrogate people as to what they saw. If that information comes up, fine, we'll take it. But the goal of the reset team really is to be there for our community with resources. Because as I've said before, after the caution tape is down, the citizens in that neighborhood is still left with the traumatic experience of that violent crime happening, whether it's next door, down the street, or around the corner. So obviously, reset is designed to go out and talk with those folks and let them know, not only as a police department, but as a community, we're standing with them in that traumatic event. Obviously, they will continue to do what they have done very well, which is continue to provide relevant, timely training opportunities for volunteers, increase the number of volunteers. We are always looking for volunteers for the reset. And I'll take this opportunity to do yet another plug for volunteers for the reset team. We feel that the more volunteers we have from our community, the more successful that endeavor will be. So we are and will continue to be accepting volunteers for the program. And working with our partners, not only throughout the city but in private sector as well, expand youth mentoring services and continue to refer at-risk youth in our community to mentors. We believe at the police department that there is a present work, which is combating violent crime on every front that we can, whether it be through our TFOs, our patrol officers. And then that is the work that many of us in this room have been doing and engaging in, is how do we interrupt the cycle of tomorrow's gun violence, next year's gun violence. And so that is what mentorship is all about. And we try to entrench ourselves in that mentorship piece as well. Changing gears slightly, traffic safety, fatal crashes in 2020, we had a total of 12 of those. And in 2021, we had a total of 10 of those. Traffic safety is something that we think is very, very important. However, with some of the challenges that we have seen in law enforcement through attrition, some of the challenges we've seen through gun violence taking up a large portion of our time, traffic safety, obviously, our traffic safety team had to be downsized somewhat. We are really looking forward to the day in which we can get back to giving more than adequate attention to traffic safety. Now, I know that probably caused caution for some because when our traffic safety team come back, that means more tickets. And obviously, you know, that's not one of the things that our public likes the most, tickets. However, they do like safe roads, and tickets is a conduit to achieve that. So in 2022, as I have stood here many times and talked to you about gun violence, gun violence is and will remain our number one priority within the police department, and really dismantling organized crime. Organized crime is when a group of people have Organized crime is when a group of people have the same mindset to do ill will and continuously create harm, whether it be violence or otherwise, in our community. That is who we're going after to ensure that we can interrupt the cycle of violence and the cycle of organized crime. And then, of course, lastly, but certainly not least, no police department is successful without the community. So we are endeavoring to continue to partner with our community and ensure that we attack all of the challenges that we have as a police department through community. And last but not least, I mentioned earlier that with a lot of time being devoted to violent crime, we have had to look for innovative ways in which we can still get the job done, one of which is through online reporting. So I certainly wanted to take this opportunity to remind everyone that you do have the ability to make reports online. That has been very successful for us so far. We want to ensure that those officers that we have on the street are actively engaged in interrupting violent crime. And so when there's instances of reports that could be taken over the phone, and not all of them are appropriate for the phone, the limited number of reports that can be taken over the phone, I would ask that the community help us be more efficient and effective by making phone reports. We have officers that are on the phone, as well as some of our civilian team members are also capable of taking reports over the phone. So with that being said, I will be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Chief. I appreciate that report, and I'm sure my colleagues as well. I don't see Mr. Cobb. I always try to go to him since he's virtual to make sure that we don't miss him. Is it possible that we can't do both at the same time when you're doing that? Because it's not...
I think that goes beyond my technical abilities to achieve...
Yours and mine both. So but anyway, I did...
I see him here.
Okay, ask Mr. Cobb if he has any question.
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, just making sure, Ms. Cobb, you don't have any questions. And if you do, you have the floor.
All right. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, Chief, for that update. I know that you all are working through and dealing with a lot of things. I'm not able to, I wasn't able to see the details of the report. But I know recently, we had the Virginia State Police report that came out. And I wanted to ask you a couple of things, which may have been in some of the details in your report this morning. One of the things that the state report does, but I don't know if we do this locally, is it breaks down aggravated assaults and simple assaults. And could you talk a little bit about the difference between those?
Yes, an aggravated assault is when there is something aggravated about that assault, i.e., a firearm was used to shoot someone. That is an aggravated assault. However, if two siblings are arguing and one smacks the hand of the other, that's a simple assault. So the aggravated assaults, obviously, you know, are felonies. And it has to have something aggravated associated with that, where a weapon was used, sort of a bat, a baton, a firearm, a knife, anything like that. That is the major difference.
And as you're going to these calls, are you continuing to find that these mostly are the result of conflicts between persons, individuals, that have become aggravated because of... I'll just leave it at that.
Yes, obviously, not only here in the city, but across the state too, there has been an increase on the inability of people to just get along. And, you know, unfortunately, that has resulted in many folks resorting to a firearm to kind of dissolve their dispute. That is very unfortunate. But that is unfortunately the case here in our city, as well as the state and the country for that matter.
I was curious in the state that, you know, we've seen an increase, I know locally and probably throughout the state, in matters regarding sex trafficking, human trafficking. But I didn't see in 2021 any arrests made in either of those categories. Can you talk a little bit about what that reality is looking like in our community? And what would be helpful for us to be aware of to address that?
Yes, one thing I can tell you is that sex trafficking, human trafficking, it exists in our communities. It exists in our state and our country for sure. And I think I would pause there to really acknowledge the great work of some of our community partners who has not only provided resources for law enforcement to help investigate those, but really provided the education on what to look for. In fact, our officers seek that education out from some of those people in our community to ensure... Hey. To ensure that we are on the cutting edge, the cusp of understanding what the intricacies associated with sex trafficking and human trafficking is.
Okay. I wanted to go down to crimes against property, which, again, I apologize, wasn't able to see some of the details that you presented earlier. I would imagine we have seen a significant increase in destruction, damage, or vandalism of property. I know that as a council member, we all probably get calls and emails from businesses, individuals who are seeing an uptick in theft. I mean, recently, cars, business, you know, property damage, people cutting fences, a lot of catalytic converter. These kinds of thefts taking place are... What are we seeing comparatively? Is this up significantly last year from previous years? Is this something we're seeing across the state? And what are some things that we as citizens and local business owners can do in collaboration with the police department to really try and crack down on these types of thefts?
Yes, in many cases, what we see here in Roanoke is just indicative of what we are seeing across the state, as well as across the country. So yes, these are crimes of opportunity. Most criminals don't want to work hard to steal and pillage. So the number-one way that obviously we can combat this is really locking up and securing our valuables. There is a high percentage of theft that is associated with valuable items being unsecure. So we ran a campaign, and obviously, we keep it incorporated into the very fabric of our communication with the community called Lock It or Lose It. And technically, that is the concept. Lock it up, or it is going to be susceptible to being lost to theft. And so we want to make sure that we continuously keep on the forefront that our citizens are locking up valuables, just things like not leaving your purse on the front seat of a car and maybe locking it up, or perhaps taking it with you. You know, not leaving sheds unsecured with very valuable lawn equipment in secluded areas of your property, things like that.
And the last thing I'll just touch on is, I was doing a comparative between our localities, Roanoke City and Roanoke County. And this is under the category of crimes against society. We had a pretty significant number of drug and narcotic violations, which I'm sure we are going to continue to see an increase in, but a relatively small number of drug equipment violations. Whereas in the county, that was a much higher number. Can you talk a little bit about the distinction? I know it's between, it has to do with equipment. But what are you seeing locally? And again, to citizens, how can we work with you to address these narcotics issues and concerns and the equipment that often goes along with them, particularly as we're trying to crack down on meth houses and opioid deaths and overdoses?
Yeah, that's a great question. You know, for us here in the city, what we try to do is interrupt the flow of drugs, either in our city or out of our city. And so we are after the tangible illegal drug, the methamphetamine, the cocaine, and in even some cases, the crack. The distinction between drug equipment and the actual drugs is the instruments used to facilitate the drugs. That's drug equipment. So that could be a syringe. That could be a spoon in which a drug user would heat heroin up. It can be anything used to facilitate the use of drugs. That's drug equipment. Obviously, that is important to get off the street. But however, we feel like if we take the drugs off the street, perhaps there won't be a need for the drug equipment. So we really try to focus on that. And partnering with the police department, as we partner with the community, I think that the thing there would be education because most people don't know what drug equipment is or how normal, everyday household items can be used as drug equipment. And so just, you know, education for family members, citizens, to understand what they are seeing and how it fits into the context of the drug world, to hopefully then be able to be in a position to offer some type of counseling or mitigation or remediation of drug use. So I think if family members and citizens are empowered to know what that is, what that looks like, you know, we would be more empowered to combat it through ensuring that the people who are using drugs get the help that they need before it comes to the point of arrest.
Thank you, Chief. That's all the questions I have right now, Vice Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cobb. And also, the PowerPoint presentation was sent in Mr. Cowell's weekly update. So if you want to take a look at it, in case you missed something, you can find it there with the weekly update.
And I actually just resent it.
Oh, okay. No, it was with the weekly update. But I just wanted to make sure he has it. Mr. Best pitch?
Well, thank you, Madam Vice Mayor, and thank you, Chief. I just want to start off by saying that when we think of public safety, we think mostly about keeping the public safe, right? And so I want you to know that I certainly support and appreciate your department's focus on dealing with the gun violence issue that certainly is way more in this city than we would like to see and across the country. It's just amazing to me, day after day after day, to hear about these shootings in other places as well as what's happening in Roanoke. Yeah, I wanted to say that there's some people in the public that may not like more traffic tickets. And there's some people in the public that wouldn't mind seeing a few more traffic tickets out there. Just because my personal, you know, we have some neighborhood streets. We have some arterial streets. We have some highways in our city. And it seems to me these days, no matter which type of street I'm driving on, there are cars that are passing me at a much higher rate of speed, if they have any opportunity at all. And if they don't have that opportunity, they're trying to kiss my rear bumper. And it's just, it's just very concerning to me. And I'm actually thankful but surprised that we don't have more traffic accidents caused by high rates of speed. And so I wonder, you know how this here, but of the traffic accidents that happen, what percentage of them involve speeding? And if you don't have that number off the top of your head, I understand. If you could get that to us, that would be great. But it just seems like to me that, you know, we've put up signs, "No Need to Speed," and that sort of thing. And I just, I just wonder sometimes what it's going to take to get people to understand that that number on that black and white sign on the side of the road actually means something.
And I totally agree with you. One of the number-one ways to reduce traffic crashes is through speed enforcement. And that is something that we have not stopped doing. Our officers still do that, as well as myself. You know, just the other day, I was out running radar myself. Someone came through my radar at eighty-nine and a forty. So we had a conversation that ended in a traffic summons. So we continue to do that. I do not have that number off the top of my head. However, we will make a note, and we will definitely get that number to you all.
Well, I just, I just think it is a concern for a lot of people. And so I appreciate the fact that it can't be our highest priority right now. I understand that. But it still needs to be a priority. The two-hundred-and-twenty-seven tickets for violating the hands-free law, those are included in the numbers that you referred to earlier about the number of traffic stops and the number of tickets that were issued?
Yes, sir.
Well, I just thought that that was interesting. If I was able to enter the numbers correctly in my calculator here a few moments ago, it looks like that the number of stops in the northeast Zone Two, fifty-one percent of the time resulted in a ticket.
Right.
In Zone Three, which is essentially southwest part of the city, forty-seven percent of the stops resulted in a ticket. In Zone One, southeast, only thirty-six percent. And Zone Four, northwest, only thirty-eight percent. So I just thought maybe we might want to pass that on to some of the people in our community who are concerned about the disproportionate number of stops or tickets that are occurring in certain parts of the city or among certain demographics and not in others. I think some of them would be surprised that almost half and a little bit more than half of the stops result in tickets in southwest and northeast, and a much lower percentage in southeast and northwest.
That is a very good point that you made, council member. Certainly appreciate you noticing that. But traffic enforcement is also used to, you know, when we're in the neighborhoods of where the violent crime is happening, traffic stops is a strategy in which we would use to not always penalize a person for making a minor traffic violation, not using a signal, but really taking the opportunity during that encounter to build a relationship with that citizen to hopefully find something out about that neighborhood, which, again, would be the neighborhood in which the violent crime is occurring, that we didn't know before the stop that could help us be more successful in solving crime.
Well, and just to finish up here with, speaking of neighborhoods, I know in the past, when I've attended neighborhood meetings, there are almost always at least one and usually two officers in attendance at any neighborhood meeting. Of course, during the pandemic, most of groups did not meet. And I guess they're starting up again now. But are we able to have officers in attendance at those meetings on a regular basis at this time?
Not as much as we like. You know, if I was to be perfectly honest, you know, we do not have officers at those community events and meetings as often as we would like. However, that does not mean that we still don't collaborate and partner with the communities to find out what the issues are, both before and after the meeting, to see how and in what best way we can address those. You know, I do that often myself. We have Captain Pulli sitting behind me, who is over our community outreach section. And I know he is constantly on the phone with the advocates and the neighborhood associations, you know, finding out what the pulse, what the tempo is.
So we're staying in touch with them?
Absolutely. We're just trying to find different ways to achieve the same mission with less people.
And finally, with the neighborhood walks, are we reinstituting those along with our fire EMS department and Public Works and so forth?
Yes, when we had that conversation last time, that's something we went back to the table to try to pull together and see how we can most effectively accomplish that. We certainly want those walks to be productive and not just a walk. So we're just taking the adequate time to make sure that we pull together the resources in a meaningful way so that when we take these walks, they're meaningful and not just posturing.
So you'll let us know when that gets good?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor.
Thank you. And Ms. Price?
Oh, thank you. Chief Roman, thank you for this report. And what my colleague, Councilwoman Bill, just finished talking about as far as the traffic stops is a perfect segue to a question that I have because I don't do math quite as quickly and as efficiently, sir. There you go, okay. Well, so for the year of 2021... Well, so for the year of 2021, there was roughly over two thousand traffic stops throughout the city.
Yes.
So a little light bulb went off, and you kind of alluded to it as far as, you know, some of the results of the summons that are issued during these traffic stops. But my question is, what other outcomes are driven from these traffic stops? And I guess more importantly, I'm asking, are any guns retrieved during these stops? I just feel like if you could just elaborate a little bit more on what are the outcomes? What happens since we've had two, over two-thousand-five-hundred traffic stops in one year? What else comes of them other than someone getting a speeding ticket?
Right. You know, we call it the why in the road. When an officer stops a vehicle, there's an opportunity there to detect crime or detect that a normal, law-abiding citizen, which is more often than not, just made a simple mistake, right? Forgot to signal or something, something like that. So the officer then has that discretion, you know, do we create an ally? Is this an opportunity for us to create an ally, or is this an opportunity for us to write a ticket for not signaling from the curb and create yet another non-ally? Again, we truly believe that we cannot be successful as we combat violent crime unless our community comes along with us on that journey. And so not only with traffic stops, but we look for every opportunity to embolster good relationships between our communities. The officers on the opposite end of the spectrum are very, very familiar with the small number of individuals that continuously create harm in our community. They are very aware of who those individuals are. And in the case that a traffic stop is conducted on those individuals, relationship building is probably not their number one goal. It's interrupting violent crime, which would then probably lead to, are there any narcotics in the vehicle? Are there any guns in the vehicle? And if probable cause or reasonable suspicion can be developed, we're retrieving those firearms through searches of vehicles. So just having the dexterity to understand who the bad guys are and who the good guys are, who can we partner with, and who can we make sure that we are interrupting the cycle of violence with?
Thank you. I thought it was important that you elaborate on that just a little bit more because it certainly gives us a better understanding as to, you know, what are the outcomes coming out of this? Not just, I was going a little bit too fast where I shouldn't be. And I have been stopped, I'll be honest. Another point you just made, one of my questions I put down as far as what can the public do? Because we all get, you guys, of course, bombarded with what's, what's being done to, to interrupt the violence and the shootings that unfortunately we are experiencing in our city. And you, you've already pointed out a couple of things, certainly, and I know part of the response you're going to give, but please elaborate a little bit more on the online reporting and being able to call in if someone sees something. I know that's something that, but I feel like it cannot be said enough.
I agree.
That crime cannot be interrupted without the partnership and cooperation of people who see stuff. So if you could just take a few minutes and go ahead and maybe give us some specific numbers or how to get in touch with, if someone sees something to report.
Absolutely. And thank you so much for making that point. Again, I say, you know, we as law enforcement cannot be successful without the help of our community. So there are so many ways in which we can help. Number one is communication. We try to ensure that we communicate so people understand some of the progress that we're making. Every month, I come and I speak to you all about prosecutions, you know, things that has, has happened over the last thirty days. And I would ask our citizens to definitely stay in tune with that information because it really shows the hard work, not only from law enforcement, but the community as well that has gone into these cases for successful prosecution. Secondly, you know, obviously, all information coming into the police department can be anonymous through our crime line, and that is three-four-four? Eighty-five-hundred. That is our crime line tip. And you can certainly leave anonymous messages for the investigators. But more importantly, you know, we would like to think that most everyone in our community knows a police officer and just make that personal, that personal call to the, to the officer that you know and that you trust. I get many of those, and I know my staff sitting behind me get many of those as well. Take those opportunities for officers that you know and have personal relationships with to pass information on. And then lastly, you know, just when an incident happens, you know, you don't necessarily have to talk to an officer there, but what you did see, make sure you retain that, that information, if it's writing it down or whatever your method or mode of retaining that valuable information. So in a day from now, when you have the opportunity to speak with a law enforcement officer in a more private setting or more reserved setting, you will be able to relay good, accurate information. So those are just a few things that I think we can do as a community to ensure that we're doing everything we possibly can to combat some of the things that we're seeing in our community.
Three-four-four?
Eight-five?
Eight-five-zero-zero.
Zero-zero.
I think that's something that we all need to make sure we have it plugged in and just pass that along as much as possible. Which brings me to my very last, it's not so much a question but a comment. You were apologizing for law enforcement not always being present at all the many functions that you are called upon. But I just want to say personally, thank you for the presence that you most certainly give every effort to, to, to give. Just a couple of weeks ago, we had our, our youth summit, which was an outdoor event. And we were concerned, many of us on the committee in planning, about the safety of having so many young people. And let me just say, we had over four hundred people at Washington Park, and it was a little disconcerting to be out in the open. But the police officers who were able, able to cover the event made sure that their presence was known, that they came around and let their presence be known, and interacted with our young people. And I feel like they did the exact same thing at the gun, what is it? Guns not, groceries not guns, that event that happened on the same day. So I appreciate, I just want to say thank you for being creative in trying to make certain that you guys are covering and still providing the safety that we, we have come to expect. And then lastly, I just want to say about the reset team? A thank you to them as well. I certainly have plans to reach out to Mr. Merchant because following through with mentoring, I am an advocate for as much preventive measures as possible when working with our youth. And I see this as another opportunity for us to, to further that engagement. So I just want to say thank you for all that you guys are doing. And as always, pray for your safety.
Thank you, very kind of you. We certainly love and enjoy, the officers actually look forward going to those events, and I know they look forward to going to that event. We did not have an opportunity to go to Juneteenth. I know the officers were looking forward to that, but that was about the time when we had a missing juvenile. Everything we, we had internally was working on that case. So we unfortunately get to miss great events sometimes, such as the Juneteenth event.
But thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
You're spread thin.
Indeed.
I'm done, yes. Thank you.
Thank you for the report on briefly. There's so much in it to digest, I'm telling you, I've just been looking through and flipping pages. But I do have to say, Mr. Bestbitch here took part of what I wanted to say on the police citizen initiated rate. And I had to say, he did the calculation and I did the estimates. So we came up with the same thing, because I was intrigued by that with what he said with regards to the zones, because we always hear, that most of the time you hear is always northwest, northwest. But when you look at these zones, it paints a different picture. So I thank Mr. Bestbitch for those, for those figures showing the actual numbers, where about, like I said, I was going to do the estimates. And I was looking at also, excuse me, I was looking at the comparisons that was very troubling to me that on the citywide year-to-date crime comparisons. And I noticed it was rape. The rape is really what disturbed me by the, from twenty, it was ninety, it was thirty, but then it went up from twenty-twenty-one, sixty-four, which you said was one-hundred-and-thirteen percent. Is that because we are, women are not taking caution, or is it just things that are just, they're just in the wrong places at the wrong time? Or what is driving these numbers?
Well, that is a very unsettling number, but let me just be absolutely clear that when someone is victimized sexually, as the numbers depict that you just read off, it is never the victim's fault. So I just want to make that clear. Obviously, with the increase that we've seen in those sexual assaults, there's numerous contributing factors, you know, one being COVID, one being we are all in the same home at the same time we have been sequestered into our homes. That was one reasoning for the increase. The other is one of the very first things that I did as I assumed chief of police here is I reached out to organizations such as SARAH to ensure that we, as a law enforcement agency, was doing everything we possibly could to make the environment conducive to ensuring that victims come forward in what can be classified as one of the most under-reported offenses there is, sexual assault. And so we have worked very hard with our partners, many of them, I highlighted SARAH, to ensure that our investigators are better trained over the last two and a half, three years to make sure that they understand the intricacies associated with a sexual vic, a sexual crime victim coming forward, and how that is underreported, and how we make our environment conducive to that person wanting to come forward and seek justice for what has happened to them. One of the things we've done was we removed the investigation of sexual assaults from our major crimes section. So traditionally, in police departments, the same people who investigate shootings and homicides are the same set of individuals that investigate sexual crimes, rapes and things like that. We took the posture to move that out of what we call major crimes and into a special victims' unit, just so it can have a more personalized touch to it, a more personalized approach, just so we can be more welcoming to victims who have fallen victim to this, this heinous crime. And so as a result, I would like to think that, you know, more people are coming forward to report these things when traditionally they don't. It's the thing that you want to keep a secret and not tell anybody and not seek justice. And more importantly, or as importantly, hold the person responsible for doing that accountable. And so we'd like to think that that's the reason for the increase in numbers, you know, because we have postured ourselves to make sure that we make ourselves an inviting police department for, through our partner organizations, for people to come and report the most unreported crime.
Pardon me, but may I just say that the real problem here is too many men who don't seem to want to accept the fact that no means no. That's the problem. And I think that's where the focus needs to be on addressing in terms of education and prevention and all that sort of thing. As you said, it's never the victim's fault. It's the fault of the person who doesn't accept no as a no. Sorry.
No, 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 you, good point. And that brings me to what he was saying, not only for women, but I think with the, what goes on in our world today, I think about teenagers, young men. As well as being victimized, sexually assaulted. And when you said not willing to come forward, because our society thinks is most of the time is women. And if a man had to come forward to say he was sexually assaulted, that takes a lot. And I do like the fact that you've taken it away from major crimes and put it into a unit. And so hopefully, this uptick is not revealing something of more attacks, even those that are happening and those that are coming forward are not just women or men, but just across the board. That's just a concern of mine when I saw that. I was just thinking, a lot of the other crimes are going down, but when I saw that the rape had increased, I was just trying to figure out what was driving that.
Yes, it is certainly a valid observation. By no means are we where we would want to be. The training, the, you know, making sure that we are welcoming, you know, that, that goes on. We never reach a point where we're satisfied, so that, that will continue, we'll continue to do that within the police department.
And the other one was, let's see here, the reset. I noticed you mentioned for the year was thirty-nine deployments, but there was your assisted nine. And I just wanted to find out, since the reset team has come on, come on board, how do you measure the success of that when they go out and they meet with families who have been traumatized? What else is in place following that? Is there a follow-up? What is in place, again, just to measure? How well they're doing?
Sure. So for us, we look at it individually, and then we look at it collectively. The collective would be, did we successfully interrupt the violent crime? Can we look down two years from now and say that we have inserted ourselves in the young at-risk lives to ensure or have a part in ensuring that they don't become a part of the violence that is occurring or criminal activity? Individually, is more refreshing for me, obviously, because we see those results now. We see the interaction by the reset team, which then turns into mentorship, and you see the lives of young people literally being turned around, not in two years, but perhaps two months. And so that is the most rewarding. You know, Lloyd Merchant, you know, he has story upon story in which that has occurred, many of which I've described right here at this podium. And then just, you know, going down to the libraries, whether it be Wednesdays or Thursdays, and, you know, where it's not an actual deployment counted in one of those thirty-nine, but just to see Lloyd Merchant and other mentors and volunteers playing basketball with nine at-risk youth on a set, on a Thursday night, Wednesday night, you know, at Forest Park School.
So it's no more, no longer just going in when there's been a shooting or someone's been traumatized? It's more of a proactive now getting involved?
What he and the team and everyone associated with reset, whether it be mentors or, it is so more, much more far-reaching than it is just by visiting the neighborhoods after a traumatic event. So, so much more to it than that.
Because I liked where you said that your next steps, where you're looking at volunteers, and you're trying to increase and expand. How are you planning to implement that as, as you go looking towards getting volunteers? What is your plan for that?
So through the whole of government, the approach that the entire city has taken to try to reduce and interrupt violent crime and criminal behavior, there's a budget associated with that. And, you know, you have mentors who can take on caseload that operate in the expertise of mentorship. And so that's how we expand. When we come across, you know, individuals that, I don't want to say would qualify, but would benefit from that mentorship, certainly there's the budget that is available to, to do that, to, to not, you know, just ask someone to mentor. But those folks who are professionals at mentoring can also get paid to mentor these young folks. And so that's how we expand, you know, from a volunteerism to a professional environment in which professional mentors and counselors are really helping to guide the, the folks that we come across during reset walks and guide them through some of the traverse, some of the difficult situations. and guide them through some of the traverse, uh, some of the difficult situations that they must traverse.
Now, uh, when you mentioned, uh, the whole government and, uh, the volunteers, does that include, uh, ex-felons working, uh, as mentors, um, with, uh, the police department, with the reset team?
Yes.
At the, at the library?
Yes.
Because I did meet, I'd meet a young man who was very instrumental.
Yes.
And I was watching how he was interacting with the kids. And he explained to me that, uh, he was, uh, working with, uh, as a volunteer, which I thought was great.
Yeah, uh, we have certainly endeavored to step outside the traditional norms.
Mm-huh.
Uh, we certainly recognize, and, uh, you know, this is what we do as a city government, in part of which you approve, uh, budgetarily, to, uh, you know, understand that, you know, in the past, some people have made mistakes.
Right.
But they are still good people and they still have something to offer in the mentorship of young folks who may be headed down that same road. And we have certainly and will continue to capitalize on individuals who fall in that category.
I always think it's, it's important to hear that firsthand, someone who has had that experience, then, then just hearing it from public safety.
Right.
So, yes.
Absolutely.
Um, and I think that's all I have, I swear, thank you.
Um, I just want to, uh, just a second, I just want to make sure we still have Mr. Cobb. He had to transition from his, um, desktop to his phone. Mr. Cobb, you still with us? And that's why I was checking.
Yes.
Okay, all right, um, did you, Sanchez Jones?
Thank you, Chief, for the great work that you guys are doing. Uh, I do have a concern. It is the large number of very young children and young adults, not, not young adults, but teenagers out late at night on the scooters. I have seen some children that they look like if they, they can be eight or ten years old out downtown unsupervised. What can we do about that? Say anything?
I know that's a hard one, I know, I'm sorry.
It's our ordinance that did that.
I am sorry.
That, that is a tough one.
If I might.
Yes.
It is not our ordinance that did that. It is the state law that prohibited us from interacting with that. We are trying to take all the actions that we can to address as much as we can on that within the bounds of law, but our hands are tied by Richmond.
How about curfew, violation of curfew?
So, um.
I'm sorry.
No, it's fine, very, very difficult. So on a, a busy Friday, Saturday night, where our officer's number one priority is to patrol, uh, areas such as our downtown and such as, uh, the areas that are experiencing violent crime, it is very hard for me as the chief to pull them off of that to, uh, address a eleven-year-old on a scooter that's riding down the sidewalk. Because I know when I pull the resources from that, uh, the resources on the more pressing crime, uh, is, is not there. So we, we tried, and I say we, because it's not just me, it's the entire team. We really try to be very, very strategic on, uh, allocating, uh, what we call human capital. And so that may be more appropriate on a Tuesday night, uh, versus a Friday and a Saturday, but it is more prevalent on a Friday and Saturday than it would be on a Tuesday.
I understand, it's just, it's hard.
It is, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Chief, can, can I offer you some order here?
I'm good, thank you. I appreciate it.
I, I, I will be very, very brief. I, I will, um, you know, the, the unfortunate thing about being last is that you, you know, you rehash and go over all this stuff they've already addressed. But I would be remiss if I did not address, um, the rape issue because, you know, a few years ago when I asked that question, it went awry. But I think that we have done so much to address that, in particular, what Mr. Bestbitch said. Um, you working with SARAH, remember they did the no means no campaign? They went down to the bars, had T-shirts, napkins, cups. I think that campaign really had an impact. And I think, um, it does help, uh, women, you know, feel more comfortable coming forward, thus the increase in numbers. But I would like to see us, uh, continue to, to be proactive. And I don't know what happened with that campaign. I know I was very, very involved in the beginning because, you know, it was kind of alarming. But, um, do you know if they're still working with, with SARAH on different campaigns? And that no means no campaign really was a good one. I really liked that one. And I would like to see us, you know, continue to work with SARAH and our other partners, um, on that particular, um, on that particular matter. Um, the other thing was the drug overdoses. We don't, um, we don't seem to report them, and I know there was a reason. And please forgive me why, um, I keep forgetting why we don't report them, because they are significant. They're, I mean, it's more so, uh, drug overdoses than, um, homicides. And for some reason, we don't get to see those numbers. Um, not that we want to see them, but I think it, we should see them so that the, the community is aware of its impact on our community.
Yeah, um, so, yes, uh, SARAH, um, we certainly want to continue any endeavor that we have with any organization, whether it be SARAH or otherwise. Uh, we've partnered to, uh, redo one of our graphics on a car with the SARAH logos to ensure that we continue to bring awareness to this very important topic. So we're going to continue to, to partner and do whatever we can to, uh, ensure that our victims, whether male or female, feel comfortable coming forward and holding those, uh, who are responsible for the crime accountable. Uh, secondarily, um, overdoses, that can be one of the most con, statistically speaking, convoluted topics to talk about because there is so many different ways in which these numbers are captured. Uh, if you look at state numbers, if you look at the medical examiner number, if you look at the city number, they're likely to be all different because they're captured so differently. We have a level four trauma center here, uh, in our jurisdiction. Overdoses that come into the trauma center and perhaps expire there, is that counted as an overdose in the city? It, the numbers are so convoluted. So we certainly have a set of numbers that we think is accurate for the city. And we'll be more than happy to, uh, to share those numbers with you.
Yeah, it's, it, drug, that, uh, drug overdose, uh, awareness month is, is next month.
Yes.
And I, and I know, I'm working with some folks to, to try to bring some awareness. And those numbers would be helpful if you, if you could do that.
I hear Caitlin's pen scratching that down behind me. We will, uh, certainly prepare those numbers and get it ready.
She's on it, she's on it. And, and I do apologize, and I, and I'll try to be brief. That's the, you know, like I said, that's the disadvantage of being last. But, um, but the groceries not guns, um, do you think that had a positive impact? I mean, I don't, I don't know the weapons that you're bringing in compared to what you showed on, on your PowerPoint. That's some baby toys compared to that serious stuff that the criminals are carrying. But would you say that the groceries not gun is working and we are getting some weapons off the street?
Yeah, I, I would say that it's, it's successful. I would classify success as any time we are able to take guns out of the hands of someone who would use it for ill will, it's a success, whether that be one or whether that be a thousand and one. And so I've always said that I count it as a success if we are able to do that. And it appears we did. And for those who have trouble buying into that concept, certainly you can buy into the concept of ensuring that people have groceries with the grocery card. So, um.
It's a good thing.
I consider it a success.
Well, we'll continue to advocate for that and to help, uh, that the, I, I guess the organizations is the NAACP, and I know, uh, Catherine Cable, uh, you know, she's just a, an independent, but she is serious about that groceries not guns. The, um, the one other thing I wanted to, to mention, um, was the homelessness and looking at it from a legislative standpoint, um, are there statutes or ordinances that impede RPD from doing their job? Like, is, is there something that prohibits you from, from, not the true homeless who has no place to live or, or, you know, can't go to the shelter, but the homeless that is homeless because they enjoy being out there roaming and, and settling wherever, um, wherever they want to settle? But there seems to be so much of it, and it's increasing, um, over the summer months. Seems like it gets worse. Is there something that we can do as a city that RPD can do?
Mm-huh. Um, well, I would say, uh, in this instance, obviously, law enforcement can only operate within the confines of current laws that are established by our elected officials. And so in saying that, um, you know, I think the way that we address homelessness is, is how we address it now. Uh, there are certainly criminal codes in place that, uh, we can utilize, such as someone camping on the sidewalk. But we also have to be very important, which I think the posture of the city has been, uh, through you all's direction, is that homelessness is not a crime, right? We want to do things to mitigate homelessness, uh, but it is certainly not a crime. In those instances in which someone is just egregiously, uh, choosing to be homeless and perhaps doing criminal activity on the streets, then certainly we, we can, we can take care of that. Uh, but, uh, you know, homelessness may be best suited to be approached through sort of the, uh, whole of government approach, you know, where we all take a part in trying to solve it. The law enforcement has a piece in it, the community has a piece in it, the private spec, sector has a piece in it, government as a whole has a piece in it. And so I, I think if we continue to approach the problem like that, uh, we'll, we, we may find success. Now, again, as law enforcement, we understand that our job is to enforce the law. And, uh, we will certainly do that when the law, uh, allows us to do that.
So, and, and I guess that's why I'm asking from a legislative standpoint, is there something missing that, that does not allow us? Because I know there are individuals, because we have come to know them by name and who have, um, opportunities, the hat team has approached them, you know, they just pick up their mattresses and God, I don't know how they are moving mattresses, but it just moved from one location to the other, which we, they have been offered assistance. And so how do we deal with those individuals? Because they are, they want no part of our, our, our assistance, which we are offering.
Yeah, um, you know, um, I am not in a position to tell counsel what to do, for sure.
So I'm asking you for some recommendations on what counsel should do as part of the legislative package, maybe?
As a governing body, you would have to determine whether that's, whether you classify that as illegal or not, whether that's a issue in which law enforcement should be interjected into or is that an issue in which, you know, some other entity?
Okay, and I, and I will follow up with our, with our, um, attorney to see if there's some state code that prohibits us from doing that. Because I, I know that it is just, it is just really getting bad. It's all over the city. And, and, and those who are homeless, we want to address their needs. Those who are homeless by choice, who want to just, you know, rove all over the city, I think it's unfair to, to the rest of the community. Um, and some, we have some residents who are frustrated by that. And so I just wanted to know if there's anything that really is impeding you all in from doing your job. And I understand that maybe it's some state or, or local ordinances that we need to address. And I will, I will move on from that. Um, and the, the only other thing is that crime line, uh, does it have caller ID?
No.
I just want to make sure because, I mean, it's like, it's a, uh, you know, it's no, you know, we don't know who's calling, and then you got the caller ID. People think about that sort of thing.
They do, you're correct.
They do, okay. Thank you, Chief, and you sure you don't want this bottle of water?
I'm fine, thank you so much.
Thanks.
Mr. Cobb, I think that, that's done, we're, we're done with Chief?
Yep, that concludes our briefing, so thank you.
Well, if, uh, all minds are clear, we will recess until two o'clock PM.